I'm gonna call the regular October City Council, council meeting to order. I wanna welcome all our citizens, all our guests that's here tonight. Thank you guys so much for coming. We'll start off with our prayer and our pledge. Uh, we'll have ex-councilman Wally if he will lead us in our prayer, uh, followed by our pledge.
Bow with me if you would please. Our gracious and loving God, we just praise you for the privilege of living in a free country where we can assemble, we can conduct our city's business, we can do it under the guidance of your wise and wonderful hand, and we can encourage and love one another. We pray that you would, tonight, in a special way, touch us, help all of our discussions to be honorable and civil, and be elevating for this community. We ask that we would be good stewards of all that you've given us, all that our citizens entrust to us, and that we will walk in your way, and you will guide us, lead us, and direct us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
So, for the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone would, uh, would you call the row, Ms. Clark? Well, I guess everybody would log in on the row? Just yes. Everyone. Alright, uh, Mr. Golden is, I actually want to be praying for him, he's, uh, sick, ill, uh, Mr. Crawford is out of town. So, we have a set of minutes to approve. If you would, on the, I think Ms. Sheila left a copy of the corrected minutes, um, before we approve the minutes, if you guys would make sure, uh, when you're speaking, that if you need to remove your mask or speak clearly and loud enough, we had a lot of trouble going back and forth trying to follow who made motions and stuff like that. Um, so, we had the guy here to work on the sound system, and we asked everyone if you, uh, would, if you don't feel comfortable taking your mask off, that's fine, but please speak clearly, uh, when you're making the motion. Um, so, any questions on the corrected council minutes, uh, from the September meeting? I got a copy somewhere, but I don't know what I did with it. There any questions on those corrected minutes? Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Make that motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Joy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wally. If you will, cast your votes. Motion carry. Alright, under my report, I want to let everyone, let everyone know that we've started Walk With the Mayor Back, Thursdays at seven AM, and on Fridays at twelve noon. So, wanna encourage everyone, if you would like to join us with, uh, for Walk With the Mayor, every Thursday at seven, and every Friday at twelve noon, we walk here in the municipal center. I wanna let everyone know the historic Hardeman Home Tour, uh, will be the seventeenth weekend from ten AM to five PM. Uh, again, that's the historic Hardeman Tour, uh, will be from ten AM to five PM, encourage everyone to go out and attend. Um, the Hardeman County Baptist Association will be hosting a prayer walk at nine AM on October twenty-fourth. Uh, that's gonna start at the Hardeman County Courthouse, and it's gonna walk through town, uh, I believe to the ballparks. But, uh, if you would like to join, they will have, just stop, they have stations along the way for water, and if you would like to do half the route or just some, but encourage everyone to come out to the prayer walk at nine AM on October twenty-fourth. Then finally, uh, I want to, at first, I encourage everyone to make sure you go out and vote, uh, at the next election. We do have one of our own, uh, running for senate. Uh, wanna wish him luck, as well as, uh, Ms. Silver Watkins, as well, uh, for the senate race. But just wanna let everyone know that in the event that, uh, Mr. Wally does win that race, his seat will become vacant, uh, at that election. So, we won't, we don't know what's gonna happen or what the process will be, but, uh, Mr. Maroney did inform me that that will be the process. So, what we would have to do, in the event of his, uh, win, we will open up the floor, um, to fill that seat. Uh, what I would like to do is, uh, in the event of that happening, just be prepared for November to, uh, open it up and let people bring in applications and stuff, and give everybody time to see if they would like to fill that seat. Like I said, that's in the case of his victory. So, but I, uh, just wanted to let y'all know that we won't have another meeting before the election, so I wanted to tell y'all before, okay? Alright, on the standing committee reports, I'll, uh, I did excuse the department heads on tonight, but we do have a bid opening for the gas department, uh, well, they, I'm sorry, the utility department had a bid open at the last utility board meeting. Uh, this is for ten thousand, ten thousand foot of gas tubing, as well as, uh, gas meters. So, the utility department, they advertised for hundred and fifty gas risers, sixty gas meter, sixty gas regulators, and the following bids were open. Consolidated, uh, y'all, I think y'all should have this in y'all minutes too. Uh, consolidated pipe, Carville, sixty-six hundred, sixty dollars. Uh, Sullivan's Natural Gas Service, Covington, sixty-eight hundred, forty dollars, uh, for the gas regulators. Consolidated pipe from Carville was twenty-four hundred, sixty dollars. Sullivan's Natural Gas Service, uh, from Covington for gas regulators was two thousand five hundred and seventy-four. Consolidated pipe for gas tubing was three thousand three hundred and twenty-nine. GNC supply from Atwood, Tennessee, gas tubing was thirty-two hundred. Uh, for the risers, consolidated pipe supply for car, from Carville was three thousand seven three fifty, and GNC, uh, from Atwood risers, three thousand two hundred and twenty-five. Uh, the utility board accepted the low bids as follows. Consolidated pipe on the gas meters for sixty-six, sixty. Consolidated pipe on the gas regulators for two thousand four, sixty. Uh, GNC supply for gas tubing, three thousand two hundred, and consolidated pipe gas risers, three thousand seven three fifty. So, uh, this is a budgeted item, and those, the what I named off at the bottom is what the utility board is asking for the council to approve, and that's the low bid.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
What, uh, what was the budget for, or is that, are they budgeting anything for this?
Yes, this was all within the budget. I don't know the exact, yeah, I don't know the exact total, but yeah, this was all in, uh, all within budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion, uh, to take the low bids?
Some of, exactly.
I have a motion from, uh, Councilman McKenna, any second from, was that you, Mr. Lett? Second from, uh, must allow to accept the low bids from consolidated pipe for gas meters, consolidated pipe for gas regulators, GNC supply for gas tubing, and consolidated pipe for gas risers. Any questions on that motion? If you will, cast your votes, please. Everybody, vote it, alright. Alright, that motion carry. Okay, next, um, my report, do you guys have a copy of this? Did I leave it in office? Um, do you, okay, okay, um. So, what I would like to do is give you guys, I'm gonna try to give you the best update I can when it comes to the landfill. Uh, this is a county of rain project, but it has sort of affected the cities. And, uh, I talked to Mayor Sane, asked him about coming tonight, but he's in, um, he's on vacation, so he wasn't able to come. So, I'm gonna explain it to y'all, um, and I probably won't be able to answer any of your questions, but I'm gonna tell you everything that I know from it. Um, so, what you have, we have stopped, I guess about a month ago. We stopped transporting our trash to the landfill, and we had to start taking it to Walnut. Uh, right now, the, um, we have, I think it's cost us about extra three, thirty-two hundred dollars in, um, man-hours on field, uh, to take that, uh, waste. Instead of us dropping it at the landfill, we've been taking it directly to Walnut to, um, I can't even think, remember the name of the, the landfill there in Walnut, but we've been taking it there. And the reason why, if you can, like I said, I'm gonna try to explain this the best I can. Uh, I don't run the landfill, but I, Mayor Sane took me out and explained, showed it to me. So, if you will look on the page, it says slide one, where it says phase two, phase three, phase four. That, the landfill is split up into different phases. Phase two is full and has reached capacity. Phase three, uh, there's, that's where the trash has been being, uh, dumped. Uh, and phase four is where the trash is gonna be once phase three is full. Uh, what has happened, if you look on slide two here, the way the landfill works, and like I said, uh, I sort of got a crash course in this. There's a, that black liner there, what happens is, that black liner, they put that in the ground, and what's supposed to have is about like a big trash bag. They put that in the ground and put the trash on it, and once they have it full, they cover it up, uh, the, the liner. And under that, uh, on the top of the line before you put trash in it, you're supposed to put a line to catch what's called leakage, leakage, I think I've seen that right. Uh, basically, any type of liquid from the trash or rain that comes through the trash, once it's closed, it goes down. If you look at slide three, if you see where those red lines where it says phase two, main line and phase three, they have those lines under it, and they're supposed to tie in to the line that's under phase one, okay? But what happened, when they put this liner in there, they put the pipe, instead of putting the pipe on top of the liner, they put it under the liner, so none of the leakage would go into the pipe. Uh, and so, if you see that picture there, what's been happening is, it's been filling up with water and trash and everything else. So, uh, Mayor Sane has, has hired Darian Grantham to move all of the stuff out to find and locate the connection here off this on side three, to locate those lines and tie it in, and put that line on top of the liner. Um, that's why the, and if you look from the here to the bottom of that, it's about a hundred-foot drop. I would say a hundred feet, that's my, uh, estimation, but I may be completely wrong. It's real high in there, I put it like that, I don't wanna misquote anything. And in the event of a dozer being up there dropping trash, I mean, in the event of those guys dropping trash up there, uh, Mayor Sane didn't want to have that risk with somebody falling onto the bottom of that down there where Darian Grantham was working. Um, so, what has happened, since this has been going on, we have not been able to take our trash to the landfill because of that reason. So, they are working on that, I don't, I know the main question is how long is this gonna happen? How long are we gonna be having to take trash there? I don't know that answer. Um, I, Ms. Mayor Sane has just told me as quick as they can, they're working on it. Um, so, that's what's been going on right now. We, I'll let you guys know, we taking our trucks, the new truck is not, is not really an issue much, because, I mean, it's, it's brand new, so don't really have a problem taking it. Uh, we do have an issue though, when it comes to our dumpster truck. The overhead truck is pretty much on its last leg now. So, driving it back to Walnut two, three times a day is, is eventually gonna wear, wear, you know, completely out. Right now, it's making it, um, I don't know how long. Uh, if you guys can recall, we did stop, I made the decision to not do bulk pickup this month, uh, and that was because it's just not safe for our guys to drive that, uh, brush truck from here to Walnut, uh, with bulk, you know, with couches and things hanging out of it. It's just, I didn't feel comfortable sending them to Walnut with it, so we, I asked the guys not to do bulk item pickup. Uh, that's the reason I made, I made that call to do that, I just didn't trust, one, I didn't trust the truck to make it, and I didn't trust the truck to make it with a couch hanging off of it. So, that's basically where we at. Any questions y'all have, I can answer them or try to direct them to somebody else.
You, you mentioned the expense, the additional expense to our budget for making the trips to Walnut. Is that something that we will be able to bill the county and they'll reimburse us?
We have, I've asked Mayor Sane to do that, consider that. Um, at this point, he said he's not, uh, because Middleton and Grand Junction and all the other cities have been taking theirs to Walnut, and they haven't been, he hasn't been paying there. So, um, I did ask if he would consider, uh, doing that, and at this, at this point, he has said that he couldn't do that.
Are, are the other cities actually hauling it themselves, or do they have another company that's hauling it for them?
The other, oh, the other only city that hauls it themselves is Whiteville, and I believe Grand Junction. I'm not for sure, but I know Whiteville, Middleton, maybe Middleton and Grand Junction both are U-CMP, but I know Middleton, U-CMP. I know right now, the ones that's been affected by this is City of Baller and the City of Whiteville.
But at one time, weren't we taking the garbage to the dump, and then they were transporting it for us?
Yes.
So, what happened to that arrangement?
Uh, I got a letter from, a call from Mayor Sane saying that they no longer could take it. Uh, that was the arrangement up until, what was that, Sheila, about a month ago, I guess? He just called and told me, and I think I, I can't tell you why, I think that the reason for doing that was because of the, uh, the manpower that, cause when we dump, we dump more than any of the other cities do. So, but that's, that was the original arrangement, we was dumping, they would, they would take her, take a dozer and load it up and onto a road back, and then the county would transport it. But right now, that's, that, that stopped, he told us. Do you know the date that we?
I think we only took it to the landfill one time.
Yeah, it was a holiday weekend, Labor Day weekend. We took it to the landfill, we dropped it there because, uh, the company in Walnut was closed over the holidays, we dropped it there. That's the only time we've dropped it there, ever since then. When we load all the trash in Baller, we dump it, uh, we take it directly to Walnut.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said it was thirty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Is that what we in the hole now, or it's been every week, every month?
That's, that's been from August twenty-eighth to September thirtieth, that's been the, I guess, a month. We, that's, that's to September thirtieth.
So, what you're saying is, when we had budget for trash with the thirty-two hundred a month, we actually giving away some money that we didn't have in the budget to actually pay?
Yes, we, we didn't budget for this to happen, no, uh-huh.
So, what does that thirty-two hundred dollars include?
Uh, eighteen hundred and thirty-nine fifty-three for fuel, eighty-nine man-hours, at an average of fifteen dollars an hour, one thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-seven cent. Cause what happens, a Walnut, the trip to Walnut, it's, uh, average, probably about an hour and a half trip, sometimes two hours, just depending on how long they have to wait. Uh, cause when they leave here, you know, we, the whole point of us having a new sanitation truck was to keep more guys here, and so, but what has, happens now, once, once that truck is full, instead of where they would go to the landfill, they have to go to Walnut, so it takes them, takes them out of the city for at least two hours, sometimes longer, sometimes quicker. But that's what that amount, that amount is.
The county's not going to be trying to assess the city anything for the repairs of the, the landfill, I assume?
The repairs of the landfill, no, no, uh-uh. But right now, the city, the citizens of, the citizens of the county pay, which include the citizens of Baller, pay nine dollars, um, a month, well, it's a hundred and nine on the property tax to run the landfill. So, those funds are what's paying for the, the, uh...
And then city residents paying extra ten dollars a month to the city?
Right, we, right now, the, so, yeah, so, you know, if I've had calls and concerned, asking people just say not to pick it up, but we, we have a, a obligation to the citizens of Baller to pick up the trash, cause they pay ten dollars every month for residential pickup, so they don't have to take it to the landfill. The issue is, that ten dollars is sort of budgeted and based off of the landfill being here in Baller, not being in Walnut, that's where the, like, uh, Councilman Joe said, we, you know, three thousand is not a lot, but after you do it over two, three months, or a year, or however long, um, it's gonna add up. And I, what I'm concerned about is the, uh, the dump truck and the mileage on the new truck, cause when we got that new truck, we agreed to a certain amount of miles with local, you know, with our local route, and we would've had way more than enough, but it didn't include, um, I don't know how long Walnut is, I don't know, twenty, thirty mile trip to Walnut.
And now, this is not a new problem at the landfill either, is it? To my recollection, this has been going on several, several years, is that correct? They've been written up?
I believe so, yeah.
Years, for not having it correctly?
Well, this land, this liner was put in when Mayor Sp, when Mayor Spencer was in office. Yeah, Mr., though, when the liner was put in, uh, I don't, it was no fault of his, when they put it in, the engineering company that did it just did it wrong, basically. Um, and they're correcting it now, but that was, I mean...
But there's no estimate on how long at all?
No, Mayor Sane just told me he's trying to get, they're trying to get it done as quick as they can. But I, I don't have a time.
Are you saying that the, uh, landfill is technically closed?
The land, the landfill, make sure I say this, the landfill is not closed to people bringing trash. So, if you want to bring your trash, and that was a misunderstanding, um, so, any citizen that wants to take trash to the landfill, you can take your trash to the landfill.
But you're dumping it in a container at the gate that they then pull to Walnut, Mississippi?
Correct, yes.
So, the dump is closed?
Technically, yeah, that's what.
Well, however you want to put it.
You cannot go in and dump garbage in the dump. You dump it at the gate in a container, and it is hauled to Walnut, Mississippi. So, the dump is closed.
They are still doing recyclables, yes.
Okay.
But the actual landfill itself, what we're looking at here, is there's no other trash being put in the landfill.
So, we don't know when we'll be able to have bulk pickup again?
At this point, no, I don't, I, I don't know, no. Cause I, I don't, I hate it for the citizen, I wanna publicly apologize, but I just don't feel comfortable taking that truck to, uh, Walnut with. And one, honestly, we don't even have the time, even if we had a brand-new truck, we don't have the time to take all of our guys and put them on the road transporting it.
Do we have other options?
Uh, for us, us, when it comes to bulk pickup?
No, just for garbage?
Uh, at this point, I don't, I don't know, no, not that I'm aware of, uh...
Cause if it's been working on this for six years, I'm doubting we're gonna get it done in the three weeks he told me it was gonna be done.
Yes, that, that three weeks has passed.
Where, 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 where do we stand as to, I know you said it's ten dollars for the citizens of Baller paid, uh, a month. Uh, if this go on a year or so, are you looking at maybe raising that ten dollars? Is the county looking at raising their hundred and nine dollars, whatever they pay a month?
I, I'm not aware of what the county would do, but I will say this, I don't, I hope we don't have to raise it, but we can't. Economically, it don't work, I mean, you know, our ten dollars is based off of landfill being here, just, it don't, it doesn't work taking it to Walnut at the rate that we're going now, and that's just now, you know, it's... And like I said, I'm worried about the, the overhead truck. We got two, and they are both, probably both twenty years old. Um, and we, if you can recall, when we talked about the, uh, when we got the residential truck, Ed had mentioned that, uh, dumpster truck was on his last leg then. Um, and we making it work, I'm not, I'm not really worried about it quitting tomorrow, but, you know, it's just a, the lifetime of a truck is what it is, and when you add extra mileage on it, it, it lowers that lifetime, so... But I wanted to let y'all know, cause I don't know what's gonna come of it, so, if you knew about, if you saw, I know I got a lot of calls, and I know some of y'all probably got a lot of calls about bulk pickup, but it wasn't because of anything on the city, it was nothing that we can control.
This thirty-two hundred that you're speaking of, I think you said it was, uh, from, make sure I got this correct.
Okay.
September the, September the thirtieth to October?
August twenty-eighth.
August, August twenty, okay.
To September thirtieth.
So, that's a little over, little close to a month.
Right, yes, sir.
Thirty-two hundred. So, we go another month, it'd be thirty-two again, well, it gonna continue to be thirty-two until, until they fix that problem out there.
Yeah, I mean, it probably, I just, you know, it could go up, cause, and that's the time that they clock from when they leave Baller to Walnut, if they have to wait longer, cost of fuel go up, I mean, I don't, this is just what it was this, that month.
Oh, what, what company was they picking up, uh, the other areas?
C and P.
C and, is it cheaper to use them? Have you tried, or someone tried?
To use them to transport?
To just transport our garbage to?
No, I haven't called them, the reason is, it would, I'm pretty sure we probably, they probably gave us a price on it, but dumping it from our truck to their truck, that, that transition could be an issue, cause when we dumping on our truck, dump truck or the residential truck, we dumping out of the truck onto, to the, uh, into Walnut. So, getting that in a, putting that in a road bank ain't gonna...
So, the, so the county mayor has been saying no estimated time at all?
No, he's just...
With the contract, is that actually?
No, he's just told me soon as he can, as soon as he can. But I'm not telling you all the time, cause I don't want y'all looking at me when I, if I say I think it'll be a month, cause I don't have a clue, this, this ain't, ain't my problem.
Well, it been going on for like Miss Suzanne said, been going on for a while, so I doubt it'll be another month.
Well, I personally, I personally spoke to the mayor before the last council meeting, he told me it would be done in three weeks, and that's the reason I made a, a comment last month, that we needed to find out how much this was costing us in that time period.
Yeah, so, that's the, um, and some of that adds into the time as well, but like, when it rains, if you see the picture here, all that water, you can't work, they pumping, he's pumping, when I went out there, he had a pumper, they pumping water out as, I mean, as quick as they can. Um, but I don't, I, I'm sorry, I wish I could answer the question, but I don't know the time, right?
Is there anybody that we can talk to with the state that might give us a suggestion of an alternative route?
We, we talked to, uh, we talked to EC, uh, T-That about dumping, uh, taking our trash maybe somewhere and dumping it, and cutting out the trips to Walnut, uh, they won't allow that, because basically, they don't allow you to dump trash where there's a landfill. Um, so, we just can't go to a site and dump it and leave it for two days and come back, you know? We tried to look at doing that, but the only economical thing to do is get the landfill fixed soon as possible, and the closest thing, closest place to drop it is, of course, in Walnut.
Before we go back into, um, back running, is they gonna inspect this to the fullest before we open it back up? Or, I mean, start using?
Well, the state's not gonna allow, uh, us to put, when I say us, county, anybody to put any trash in the, in that phase four until that's done. And like I said, phase three is not com, they could probably, I think Mayor Sane told me they could put more trash in phase three, that, that cell is not completely full, it's just a matter of the safety of having a guy. Like I said, it's a, it's a big drop, uh, up there, uh... And after this cell is closed, I mean, it's gonna, it's, the county gonna have issue when it comes to, uh, trash here in a few years. I don't know what they're planning to do, though.
So, right now, we're not even using the landfill?
The city, no, uh-huh.
Why would we pay for services you don't have?
Well, what's, what the county is doing, we're, we're not paying the, the tipping fee in Walnut. The county is paying that, so when we go and dump the trash, the county is paying the cost of the...
The regular fees.
Yeah.
But we still add a thirty-two hundred dollars.
Right, for the travel time and manpower to get there. And I don't know, I guess I could look it up, I didn't think about this till now. We're, I don't know for sure, but at the rate we're going, we probably may potentially, uh, depending on how long we do this, we're gonna have a, some type of penalty on our, um, on our new garbage truck when it comes to miles. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be much, but that's gonna have to be discussed, he may just give us unlimited, but I don't know, but that, that, you know, that was a part of the deal, cause the buyback program with the truck, they would buy it back with low amount of miles, I don't know what that number is.
Do you know if he's willing to go to the, come to the table on some of the fees that we had to inquire, with the changes?
I've asked, I think his concern is that what he does for Baller, he'll have to do for the whole county, Middleton, uh, Whiteville.
Same kind of contract?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Is that something we might can ask Jim if he can pay the, uh, since it's not our fault, it's the fault of the city. It's the fault of the county. And, uh, and I don't think we need to be penalized for what some other agent, uh, got us into, burned us, what they done. So, that's something we can talk to Jimmy and see if we can work something out with it. If we do get an opinion, uh, that they can work with us.
I can, I can ask, uh, the last conversation I had with him, I don't think he's, I don't think he's gonna do it, like I said, just because of what it would, it would be, that same agreement to everybody, but I'll ask him, I'll ask again, if that's what, you know? And I, I really, I was just wanting to let y'all know what happened with the bulk pickup and what's been going on on our end, if any questions was asked, I was hoping Mayor Sane could be here, but like I said, he was on vacation, so he wasn't able to come, and y'all could... I sort of felt I was gonna be able not to answer any of your questions, but I wanted to try my best. Uh, he does have a, it's a problem out there, I mean, he showed me, and it's, I don't, I don't know though, how long it takes, I don't know anything about running the landfill, not gonna try to act like I do, but...
When you talk to him, you let him know that we definitely had some questions.
Well, I'm pretty sure he'd get the message. Uh, but I'll, I'll, that's the landfill update, and I'm pretty sure y'all probably got more questions than you do answers, but, um, I'll just, well, maybe we can, I'll talk to Mayor Sane again, and maybe at the next council meeting, we can, hopefully it'll be fixed by then, but if not, we'll, I'll ask him if he can come, and we can come up with something else then. Alright, any other questions on that? Okay, I feel like I made the situation work, wow, I tried.
You've done the best you could, Mayor, we're in the circle, saying you've done the best you could.
That's all on the committee reports. Moving on to old business. Anybody having other questions on committee reports on anything? Did everybody get all of? Okay. All right, uh, on, uh, on old business, we have a second reading, public hearing ordinance twenty zero zero four in ordinance to amend title one, chapter two of the Bolivar municipal code to establish the salary of the mayor. Uh, I'll make this real quick. I think everybody pretty much know where we are, but for the ones that's just coming on, we to make it as quick as I can, we know Ms. Sheila has announced her retirement as city administrator. Discussion has, was started about a year or two ago about uh, replacing administrator, or if we wanted to move to a different, uh, form of government with a, a mayor that took on the duties of, the day-to-day duties of the city with a clerk and recorder. We've had multiple committees to meet, put it together, work on ordinance. Uh, this is where we are. We on the second reading of it. We've passed a fir- we went through the committee meetings, uh, we passed the first reading on last month. The committee did meet again, and what the committee basically met for on the second time was just to discuss potential of the clerk and recorder duties. What will happen from that? The clerk and recorder duties would have to be put into a ordinance taken to the, uh, state to change for our, uh, change our charter from city administrator to clerk and recorder. But that, that will be discussed for salary, budget and all that. I mean, salaries and things will be discussed in the, uh, budget talks with that position. So we're here at the second reading, public hearing of ordinance twenty zero zero four and ordinance to title one, chapter two. Um, this ordinance will set the salary of the mayor to, for eighty-five thousand per year, paid in equal installments on the same days as regular payroll of city employees. Mayor will receive benefits, cost of living as regular full-time employees. This ordinance will take effect at the next, after the next election. Uh, so this ordinance will not apply to me. It will apply to the next mayor, whoever that may be, whether it's me or whoever it is that wins that election. So what we'll be discussing is just basically that position. Um, so if there's not any opposition, can I hear a motion to convene, uh, to adjourn from executive session into public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, councilman, and we have a, okay, I have a motion, councilman Ray, second, councilman joint to adjourn public, uh, to adjourn executive hearing, go into public hearing. So in all my favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. So now we are in the public hearing section of ordinance twenty zero zero four. If anybody would like to speak to this ordinance, pro or against, this will be your opportunity. Uh, if you would, limit your comments to three minutes, um, try to put this timer. You can approach the podium here. If you would like to speak, please speak into the, um, microphone there. State your name and where, what business you're associated with, or if you, where you live, or just, just let us know who you are. So you're open to come at this time.
Hi.
Uh.
Hi. Hi, I'm Laura Hall and I live in Bolivar. And I would like to approach you as council members tonight to please support having a full-time mayor. Um, the city of Bolivar is on an upward trend and is really at a pivotal point in its economic development. And it needs the commitment of a full-time position. I do think that in the past, one of the things that has held our city back is the fact that our mayor has had to have a job that feeds his family as well as being mayor of the city. Having a full-time mayor and adequately supporting that role will allow the mayor to fully commit to this position and really move the city of Bolivar to the place that it can be. I don't have a lot of long comments, so I will keep it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I probably won't be as sweet as she is. I'm Joanna Harwood. I actually own two businesses in Bolivar. Um, I was surprised that the mayor was not full-time, because he does work full-time. Um, and the leadership, he is the leader of our city. He is the face of our city. This is the person that they look at, whether it's him or whoever wins it next. And to me, he needs to be compensated for his actual work. And if you leave it at a part-time and you're gonna get what you pay for in the next election, when you bring in somebody who is part-time, if it's not Julian or whoever, it's just not gonna work. We are, I mean, you, you've seen what's coming in downtown. I mean, not just us, there's other people, there's other places. And that's all because of him. We wouldn't be there now if he hadn't helped us. And, you know, you're just, you're not gonna get that from a, from a part-time mayor. You're just not. So that's just my little thinking on it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll unmask, cause I come before you guys.
Probably couldn't tell it was me out there. I'm Greg Vaughn, owner of Vaughn Oil and some other businesses in town. First of all, I wanna say you guys, along with the mayor's leadership and, and Sheila's leadership, have done a tremendous job the last few years bringing this city forward. Uh, just like the lady just said, when you see things going on around town, there's all, you guys are always well represented, well represented. You're also very supportive of the businesses that are in our, in our city. And I think that's tremendously important. Um, as we, as business owners, put money back into this community, uh, we look to the city and the county to be supportive of the things that we do. So I appreciate that. And I do support the, the full-time mayor. I think it's time. I've, I've seen the amount of effort that, that you guys and Julian have put in, Mayor McTisick. And, uh, you're right, I'm sure we're way below the federal labor standards of what we're paying him for right now. So I'm, I'm a hundred percent for it. I would, I would encourage you guys to, uh, thoughtfully consider it that we, uh, we move forward with this, uh, full-time mayor. And again, thank y'all all for what you do to support this community and to support small businesses like ours. They're represented. There's not a lot of us out here tonight, but there are a lot of businesses in this town that really appreciate what y'all do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's, uh, I'm sorry.
Counting how, and I'd like to echo what Greg and, and Ms. Hall and, uh, everybody else has said. Oh, we appreciate you. I've sat, I've sat in the back of this courtroom for twenty years. My hat's off to you guys. I see things good for the city of Bolivar. There are lots and lots of opportunities and we need you guys and we need a full-time mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There are motion to adjourn public hearing and to reconvene into executive session?
So moved.
Motion for Ms. McKen-.
Second.
Motion for Ms. McKenna, second, Councilwoman Spinks. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we're back into executive session. Any discussions, uh, questions, anything on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, just a, a couple of quick questions. Um, in our last consideration of this passing it on, on first reading, I voted no. And the primary reason I voted no had to do, not with you as a mayor, but theoretically, the, the the balance of power and the ability for checks and balances that the council has with a mayor. Whoever our next mayor or mayors down the future might be. Uh, specifically uh, related to, as you know, the city administrator is, is hired by the council. Uh, I know that position's not gonna be addressed in this particular ordinance. This ordinance is exclusively for the mayor, but uh, that's, was a concern that I had. I know that that's gonna be and can be handled, uh, as the next ordinance might be considered for replacing a city administrator with a city, uh, clerk and recorder. But I really think it's gonna be vital that we, you know, as a council, maintain that healthy check and balances that any executive and legislative branches have between one another. Uh, again, I know that can't be addressed today, but I think that's really critical. I had the chance since our last meeting too, to spend some time with a couple of full-time mayors in, uh, county seat communities, Lexington and Brownsville. And, uh, it, it influenced me, uh, as I saw in particular the work in Lexington. But both cities, I think we can all fairly say, have, uh, probably surpassed us in terms of downtown development and, and other, uh, industrial recruitment and business expansion. One of the things they've done particularly in Lexington is have, uh, a full-time mayor that cooperates and coordinates very uh, successfully with the industrial board, the county and whatnot. That's something a full-time or a part-time mayor in and of itself can't guarantee. But, uh, someone that can go out and market the, the community, market the city aggressively uh, was something that was very persuasive as I visited, particularly with the Lexington mayor. So I just wanted to, to make those couple of comments and also to confirm, uh, with our council that should we pass this, whomever is the next mayor will have to win a, a majority, uh, in an election. Uh, should a majority not be achieved, uh, if there are multiple candidates beyond two, then there would be a runoff to make sure someone, uh, that wins his position would have a majority of the support of the city of Bolivar. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. You're, it, it's required by your documents that, that a, if no one receives a majority of the vote with multiple candidates like you described, then there's a runoff election between the top two uh, vote-getters.
And then to address my other, uh, interest about, uh, checks and balances, balance of power, that would have to be handled in another ordinance when we address issues about replacing the city administrator position, and a charter change, the city administrator position with, with the, um, clerk and recorder.
Right. Your, your current charter does provide for a city administrator appointed by the council and it spells out the various duties. So to the extent you are going to either eliminate or modify what a city administrator would do, uh, that, you know, any changes to that position in that regard would require, um, you know, would require change to your charter.
And that would, that whole issue would have to be addressed as well. If you change the, currently it, it states it is the position's hired by the council. Uh, if we change the position itself, it still says it's hired by the council. That's changed as well, right?
Right. Those are, those are.
Two separate issues.
Those are both parts of the charter, but you're right, they're both separate and distinct parts of that section.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Did you get all of your?
I did, thank you.
All right, there's our motion on ordinance twenty zero zero four.
So moved.
Who was that?
Me.
Okay. I have a motion approved by Councilwoman Ray and second by Ms. Spinks. If you would, uh, cast your vote. Everyone voted? So we have four in favor, Councilman Joy, Councilman Ray, Councilman Speaks, Councilman Wally in favor, Councilman Lowell, no, and abstain, Ms. McKenna, so motion pass. Next, we have second reading of ordinance twenty zero zero five and ordinance to amend title one, chapter one of the Bolivar municipal code to establish the salary of the council members. Setting the salary for the council members at six thousand a year. So same concept, um, so if there, is there a motion to convene, to adjourn the executive session and convene public hearing? Motion, motion by Councilman Joyce, second by Councilman McKenna. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. So at this state, is there anyone that would like to speak on the ordinance twenty zero zero five salary for the council? All right, is there a motion to adjourn public hearing and to convene to executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. McKenna.
Second.
Second by Councilman Joy. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. So now we're under, uh, executive hearing. Is any questions on this ordinance?
I was just like, and I'm, I know I'm usually reticent and quiet and try to make, uh, you know, the best decision possible, but I do wanna say from before that I do think that the mayor deserves more money. And I'm not opposed to that. Uh, and, and I've had talks with several people, but when I was campaigning for reelection, the, the number one thing that people talked to me about was not a full-time mayor. And I gave my word not to vote for a full-time mayor, but I would vote for a pay raise. And I would vote for a pay raise, but this is something I specifically said I would not vote for. And I, I just, I have a hard time breaking my word when I gave it to so many people, uh, through there. Uh, but I do wanna say publicly that I, I feel that, that Mayor McTisick has done a great job. And I think that he definitely deserves a bigger salary for what he does. So I do not want my no vote to be misconstrued in a way that I'm totally opposed to this, because I'm not. Uh, I do believe in that pay raise, and I do believe that he's, he's done a very good job. And I, I do want everybody to understand that. And I also want everybody to understand that since I voted no in that, in that instinct, I'm not gonna vote no for a, a possible raise for my, myself as councilman, because I feel like that would be wrong also. Uh, I feel like after the next election and whoever's elected, you know, I, I feel like that's deserving also, but I'm not gonna vote for a raise for councilman when I did not in the other instance. But I just want the mayor to know and everyone to know that I do believe that the mayor deserves higher compensation for the job that he does. I do believe that. But I, I just kept my word as I, as I campaigned, so. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
I can just allow anybody else? Okay, uh, so is there a, a motion on ordinance twenty zero zero five?
So moved.
Have a motion, uh, to approve ordinance zero zero five. Is there a, a second?
A second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ray, a second by Councilwoman Spinks. If you will cast your votes. So the motion, I see the votes, Councilman Joy, Councilman Loud, Councilman Wally, no. Um, Councilman McKenna abstain, Councilman Ray, Councilman Speaks, Spinks in favor. So that fell three to two to one. So what we will do, I guess, is the ones that's opposed, uh, y'all have something that y'all would like to bring to the next council meeting to pass?
I wouldn't know how, I mean, y'all cut me off and I'm just, I went on and voted anyway. But, uh, how did y'all come up with the five hundred dollars? The res- the original pay for council is two seventy-five a month, and I don't think we deserve it at one meeting a month. So whoever was on this committee, how did y'all come up with the extra? One meeting a month. We don't do a whole lot of extra, uh, extra meetings. So how did y'all come up with the extra?
There's a lot of us that do a lot of extra meetings.
That is, that's, that's, that's gonna compensate for almost two hundred and fifty dollars?
Yep.
Well, I don't think nobody on this council came up here to run for an election for a second job. It's not a second job. You should be a steward. Basically for free, I owe them two hundred seventy-five dollars. Cause I don't think one meeting a month would justify the two seventy-five that we're getting now. And then to jack it up, more. I don't think no one here can justify that, even with the gas mileage. Wherever you coming from, whatever job, most meetings we have is what? Hour, hour and twenty minutes, mate? You can't give it to your city?
Some discussion that was brought up, but I'll say this. One, one of the issues I have with the council is that some boards pay, some don't. So, um, the electric board, what's the Loud think is compensated extra two hundred? He's compensated extra two hundred to be on the electric board. Uh, nobody else up here is compensated extra. Let's see, uh, count, what other board on here pays? The utility board is compensated and the planning commission is compensated. So some of the council members that serves on the council, they don't, uh, get any extra pay. Then you have, I think, Councilwoman Ray that serves on historic zoning, uh, slum hearing. It's like two or three others she served on, and she's not compensate, compensated any extra. Councilman McKenna here is not co- nobody else is compensated for their board. So that came out in that discussion is how we address, you know, some getting paid double, twice more than others. So, but I, I, I just wanted to put that out there.
I, I think it's reasonable, but I mean, I've already stated why I'm gonna vote against it, but I think it's, I think it is reasonable.
The.
To pay, to raise, but I just, I, I voted against the others, so I don't feel right and vote for, could benefit me.
Well, we have to pass an ordinance. We have to set the salary at something, so, um, I don't really know the ones that's opposed, if there's something that y'all would like to, how y'all would like to handle it. We will have, we have to set the ordinance by, by, uh, how y'all would like to handle it, we will have, we have to set the ordinance by by, um, we have to set the salary by ordinance. So we can bring it up at the next council meeting and if you guys want to, we can have another committee meeting and anybody that has opposition to it can bring it up. And we can bring the amended ordinance that way. Would that, and I'm doing that legally, right?
Yes, sir, but like you said, whatever number you select is still an ordinance, still going to require two readings.
Right.
You need to allot your time for that because, uh,
Yeah, of course, we got it. We we can, we can bring a new ord- we can have a committee meeting, bring a new ordinance or, um, in Nov- Nov- November. Well, let me ask you this, um, and so with this failing, make sure I'm following this correctly legally. The bringing this back to the next council meeting with other two council members being absent, that still wouldn't work, right? The prevailing side would have to be, or this is different for ordinance.
Well, it's different because you're talking about a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
In other words, you you can, any member of the council can bring a motion, uh, you know, for business and and if it's to present an ordinance, you know, that's fine. What you're, I think what you're referring to is, let's say, within this same meeting that we just are conducting tonight, before this meeting is adjourned, if someone who was on the prevailing side of that vote wanted to bring the matter up for consideration again, that could happen. And that would require someone who was on the prevailing side, not someone who was on the side
Prevailing in this point would be no, the
That's correct. Yes, sir. Oh, that's right. But but as far as, but once you move into a subsequent meeting, this means adjourned, you got a subsequent meeting there, you're not bound by that requirement.
Okay.
If you're if you're bringing a f- a fresh motion.
Okay.
Uh, you know, a fr- a fresh ordinance that's, you know, been, as you say, maybe come through a committee or what have you.
So what we can do, I guess, is set a, um, if y'all are okay with this, we set another committee meeting with Ms. Ray, Ms. Spinks, Mr. Golden and Mr. Crawford, and announce when that meeting is and bring, um, bring this ordinance or another ordinance back to vote on in November. Everybody okay with that?
Just a, just a point of clarification, does there have to be another ordinance? If there's not another ordinance, would the pay continue as is?
No, the ordinance, the pay, the the pay will have to be set by ordinance right now. When this term is up, we don't have an ordinance set for the pay. So if we wanted to, we could set it the same. Uh, but there has to be an ordinance passed because when we did the charter change, that eliminated the part where it talks about the pay for the mayor and council. It's the charter states that the mayor and council's pay is set by ordinance.
All right.
So ordinance has to be set. And so order has to be passed, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Maroney, could you bring back this same ordinance next meeting? And it, but it would have to rewind where it'd be the first reading of this ordinance or could it be the second reading of this ordinance again?
No, this ordinance is
Failed, huh?
Structure is failed. So you, i- i- if for the sake of argument, the committee came back and said, we're recommending a motion for the pay in the exact same amount, that would still be a required first
First reading, yeah.
Yes, sir. Because it would technically be a new
But this has got to be done how many days before the qualifying day for the election?
Ninety.
So that puts us where?
Uh, November, we can pa- December, you can pass the first one in November, pass the second one in December. It has to be done by the December council meeting though. I mean, by that, like, the December meeting is, the D- December is our deadline unless we have a, we have to have a special call meeting like in the end of December if it failed. Again, December eighteenth. So if we, if we brought it up next month, passed it, whatever ordinance in November, we can bring it up again in December meeting, passing on the second here and we won't have to have any special, uh, call meetings or anything.
Would it be possible for the ones that voted no to give us a recommendation of what they'd like to see done?
An amount? I'm okay with that. Uh, so Mr. Law, Mr. Wally, Mr. Joy, y'all have a number that y'all would like to see? Will you say leave it like what it is?
A lower.
A lower, okay. Uh, Mr. Mr. Wally, y'all have any? Well, Mr. Wally was fine with the amount, I guess, is what you said, yeah.
I'm fine with what they were suggesting. I just, again, I I couldn't vote myself and not you.
But again, you have to remember that the the this is just for the new people that come in.
Yes.
Yeah.
So ju- this is just, this is not for who's sitting here now. This is for who's coming up next.
Do you have any number you would want to recommend?
I don't have a recommendation. I'd I'd be more comfortable leaving it as is, but, um,
Okay. All right, well, I guess the council committee could take those recommendations and go from there. Any other questions? All right, moving on to, uh, so that's all our old business, moving on to new business. First reading of ordinance twenty zero zero six, an ordinance to establish an updated occupational safety and health program plan, devise rules and regulations and provide a safety director and implementation of implementation of search, uh, program plan. Basically, we put together a safety plan, uh, we do that every year and this comes through, uh, Chief Price and and Jared is part of does this. So we just have to pass that, uh, if you guys got a copy, we have to pass this every year. Any questions on that, uh, ordinance?
Who is, who is the, uh, s- safety director when you speak of the safety director? Do we have one, first of all?
Yeah, Jared does.
Okay.
Um, Jared's last in white.
All right.
Any other questions on this ordinance? Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty zero zero six?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Joyce, our second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Law, all in favor, which you would, if you would cash your votes. I'm going to put you on the table. All right, everybody voting in favor, motion carried. All right, next is resolution twenty 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 zero four. Resolution authorizing the city of all to participate in the James L. Richardson Driver Safety Match and Grant, a fifty percent match, eighty-two hundred dollars. This money, we apply for this grant every every year, uh, and Chief, uh, Price administers this and that money is in the budget there. We just have to have that resolution to participate in order to receive it.
So moved.
I have a motion as our second.
Our second.
I have a motion by Councilman McKenna, a second by Councilwoman Spinks, if you would cash your votes. Motion carried. Okay, we're going with the, I missed my papers up here. All right, sorry. Next, I have a resolution twenty twenty zero zero five, a resolution providing the cash match for the twenty twenty T dot multimodal access grant. It's a five percent match. It's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We, um, this money here is not budgeted. We don't know if we will get the grant, what this is. I'm asking that you guys would, that allow us to apply and what we're going to try to do, if this grant goes through, this will help us get sidewalks from Highway sixty-four, um, I'm trying to find Highway sixty-four East, from where downtown at the old jail there where the boxing club is. We will run sidewalks and streetscapes down that highway down to San Beach Lake. If, like I said, if we receive the grant, then twelve thousand five hundred is not budgeted, uh, but it would be, it would be taken out of our fund balance in the event that we did receive the grant. So I think to receive two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is pretty good and only have to pay tw- twelve thousand five hundred.
So moved.
Have
Our second.
I have a motion, Councilman McKenna, a second, and Councilman Law, if you would cash your votes. Motion carried. Everyone voted in favor. I have a here secondly, open interest bearing checking account for the community development block grant at Simmons Bank. Uh, we try to keep it at a local bank, the ones that will give us the highest interest on our checking accounts. So that money from the, uh, grant that we use for the Suda project would be there, there. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Wally, second by Councilman Spinks, all in favor, if you would cash your votes. Our motion carried, all in favor. Uh, um, we have board appointments for, uh, the Ball of Historic Zoning Commission. I'm asking you guys to approve, uh, adding to the Historic Zoning Commission, Mr. Richard McAmalty, Ms. Leitha Frost and Ms. Kathy Roberts to serve on the Ball I'm sorry, Karen Roberts, uh, Ms. Karen Roberts to serve on the, uh, Ball of Historic Zoning Commission. There a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion for Councilwoman Ray's, our second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Wally, if you would, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, um, under, uh, Mr. Joy dead asked, uh, for new business, if you want to run to the council.
Okay, uh, it's it's just a short inquiry, uh, you know, just just through the mayor to other city clerks. Uh, what is your procedure when you receive a bill that's been received to the city unauthorized in your office?
What is our procedure when we receive?
Yeah, I'm talking through you to Ms. Sheila. She run the day-to-day operations.
I, yeah, did you understand this question?
What procedure I use if I receive a bill that's unauthorized?
That's unauthorized.
The first thing I do is I check with the mayor to find out whichever, whoever the bill is billed to, to find out if it was unauthorized or if they have approved it. If they say that they did not use that, they did not authorize that, then I immediately contact our city attorney and ask what we should do on that same thing. And if it's something that's been ongoing, then I contact our auditors also and let the auditors know what to do and then they tell me that process that I need to do next.
And you do know you have investigating power, do you not? Just like this body, we have investigating power, we have subpoena power as well, just as well as the, uh, city attorney. Did you do any investigation once you received the bill with on behalf of Councilman Joy?
Yes, sir, I did. I called the, um, the hotel, which you're you're talking about. And I asked them what this, um, chart was for and who to sign for it. Uh, they gave me the information. They told me that it was, uh, also approved on a mayor's credit card.
Mm-hmm.
And they also said that, um, the bill that said for pleasure use. So then I went back and asked Mayor Matisic if he had approved this. He did not approve it. He did not know anything about it. Um, so I called the card, credit card company back again and asked them if they could email me all of the documentation that they had. And they did. So at that time is when I went ahead and turned it in to whoever I was supposed to turn in.
Okay. And that's your procedure for everybody that has a, uh, a mishap on a credit card issue? That's what you're stating today?
Well, if it's unapproved and if they tell me that they have, they've, uh, they've used it by mistake and it hadn't been an ongoing thing, I mean, just a ten or fifteen dollar card, then, you know, we handle it in-house.
Okay. Well, here's my problem with that, Ms. Sheila. You're saying it's hasn't been an ongoing thing, but I have paperwork and proof that it was somebody else. Here in the city hall has an ongoing thing, but you wrote notes all over. But when it came to Councilman Joy, you called comptrollers, Steve Maroney, with no investigation because I know what happened. We have the proof. It wasn't a proper investigation. You didn't treat my investigation like you treated this other person. And there was a different treatment. You know who I'm talking about and we can keep that quiet. It was four different times on that person's credit card that was done different than Councilman Joy's. Never had a call. We know what happened. It was an improper investigation. This board has the power to investigate along with you and along with the city attorney. I have paperwork. He even wrote a confidential letter saying he has investigation power. And so what I'm stating today, I'm making the charge that what you done was wrong, what Steve Maroney done was wrong. And it was to deprive Councilman Joy from his elected official seat. Got all the proof and I did it on the record. Thank you.
I disagree with you.
Okay.
We can agree and disagree. It's all right.
Hey, anybody on the committee to develop?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I've been listening to this conversation and a statement was just made that I did something improper. I'd like to hear what that allegedly is that I did that was improper.
Well, want me to show you?
Sure.
I'd rather show you in court. How about that?
Okay.
Because you have, you you wrote a letter, you wrote a letter to us saying, uh, TCA code, you have investigating power. And you know how I know you didn't even do no investigations? Because me and my attorneys found out what happened less than twenty minutes. But instead you pushed the call to the comptroller's office to get me off my seat because you ready for an ouster procedure where you can make some money. And I got bills on you right now where you didn't overcharge the city plenty of times. Plenty of times. And I I want that on the on the next meeting. I want a special order to go over his bills.
Wow, and why you?
Got proof of that too, sir, so I'll show it to you.
That's fine. I'll stay for the rec- I'll stay for the benefit of the council and you too, if you want to hear it. Uh, I've not initiated
Well, I didn't ask you.
I've not initiated any ouster procedure against Mr. Joy or anybody else.
Well, that's not what it says in the letter, sir. You didn't call the DA office plenty of times. Got proof of that?
I think you're confusing
No, I'm not confusing nothing.
Actually, you are. You're confusing an investigation
No, my attorney is not that, look, I pay my attorney more than two hundred dollars an hour. You say that's what you work. Mine was four hundred and fifty.
I believe what you just stated is a confusion of a investigation with a prosecution. I've not prosecuted any ouster against you.
No, but you have been inquiring and you've been locked, loaded and ready and I am too.
All right, any
And this is, I'm in my, I'm in my privy, I can say it. This is the council, the council has this, has that power to ask questions and inquire. You don't have to answer to me.
I'm I'm not trying to do anything other than ask you what you're out, you made an allegation. I asked you what it was concerning. I think now I know what you're speaking of.
What you charged for it? It's on your bill.
I asked you what you were saying, what you were talking about.
You charged for it. Plenty of times you called the DA out of Fayette County. All right, anybody else? Is there a motion to?
Uh, Ms., uh, before we, before we, uh, uh, make that motion, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's just that I have been receiving a lot of calls in regards to my injury accident there in tune. So I thought it'd just be appropriate to, uh, say something about that tonight. And that is that I'd like to thank the citizens of Hardeman County. I'd like to thank my, uh, city councilman of Bolivar for your prayers and your calls. I'd like to thank, uh, Tune Board of Alderman and their city, uh, city, uh, their citizens there in tune. But to to, uh, make sure that I get everybody, don't leave nobody out, that I do appreciate Hardeman County citizens for your prayers. Because as, uh, and I'm here to tell you, your prayers was answered and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you and happy
And with that being said
Happy to have you back. You go ahead and make the motion.
I can make that motion with your
Motion to adjourn Mr. McKenna, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Joy, all in favor? Stand up, we can go.